Yes, sometimes I'm chatting from here. So this is Yahoo Finance. Alright. So the very first thing I'm going to do is look, show you guys the homepage, okay? First thing you see, what do you guys see? You see news, you see stock prices on the, or you see index prices on the right. You see, you know, a few stocks that are moving this way, that way, Dell down, AMD down, that kind of stuff. Now, the reason I use Yahoo Finance is because I can find a lot of information, news articles about specific stocks and what they are doing. So here you have a search bar, you can just search in any stock you want. Everyone likes to trade Tesla, Palantir, it's all up here. You just search it and what happens when you click on it? It will up the stock and what the price action did on the last day, five days, you know, all that kind of stuff, right? On the month we see Palantir is up forty seven percent. Either way, the reason I pulled up Yahoo Finance today is because I want to show you guys that one way I use this to give me an advantage on what stocks to trade is look, I have my portfolio and I have a watch list, right? So why do I have this watch list? Um, let me ask you guys first. Anyone know why I've got a watch list? Feel free to unmute yourself, just throw an answer out, doesn't matter who it is. That's it. Thank you. Thank you. To watch it. I want to see what stocks are doing. I want to see what specifically these stocks are doing. I have a watch list to watch the stocks. So very first thing, if you're a newbie beginner and you're going into the market each day, you want to have a watch list. You want to have three stocks, five stocks, 10 stocks. I'd say no more than 12, just to see what they're doing. You can look at the change in the price, change in percentage on a day, that kind of stuff, right? As you can see, Costco was up $10 today, but it's only 1%, you know? So you might change it and say, okay, Palantir was up 2%, but it only moved $1. So either way, that's why we have a watch list, just to watch these specific stocks. I like watching Palantir. I like watching Chipotle. I like watching Costco, so on and so forth, right? I like watching Roku. Today I said in the chat, Roku puts. Why? Because I saw Roku was dropping. It ended up the day down 3%. This is what we do. Go to the chart, have a look and see, oh yeah. You know, we can make it, we can expand this chart, make it a bit more interactive and look. You can just see what the chart does, right? You can see what the stock has been doing over the past few days. And obviously, um, this is just specifically today. Yeah, you can see what the stock is doing over the past few days. You can see that a few days ago, let me go all the way back here. A few days ago it was at $71, now it's at $66. So you know it's obviously bearish. I just wanted to show you guys that because if you don't use anything like a um, a Yahoo Finance, a CNBC, a Bloomberg, uh, any of those kind of thing, then you are going to struggle to understand why sometimes stocks move based off news, right? We use fundamental analysis, we also use technical analysis. So this is the fundamental side of things. Now we're going to jump over to trading view. And this is what a lot of you are more familiar with, okay? So the same stock I just looked at, Roku. This is where it's a bit different. Because I use Trading View more for the technical side of things, right? So this is the daily chart. I have three moving averages here. This is the daily chart. You can see a line up here, the red line. It is called resistance. It is a price point where the stock failed to, well, the stock reached and failed to break above multiple times. That is resistance. Now, why do I have my resistance?
I have a quick question. That resistance line you put, you put that on there or?
Look, I can delete it. It's my line, you know? Just make the line. And I just make it right around the body. Where the, where the body pushed towards and failed to close above. And I put it red because, I don't know, I just chose to. But you can put it whatever color you want. Like I could put it as green because it's up high. Could put it as red because I say it failed to break above that. It, it just, it's just my line which I made there. So yeah, great question. Thank you for that. So the reason we have resistance is because we can kind of gauge what price action may do at a certain level. If I was to pull up, let's just pick a random stock, Amazon. Aha. So I have two lines here, yellow line and a red line. Red line was resistance again, here. Price went here, failed to break above. Price came back up here and gapped up, okay? Now it looks like price could be, it could be, sorry, it looks like this resistance line could become a new level of support. But either way, my point here was just to point out, you can go on Trading View and mark different levels on stocks however you like. You know, just to get a gauge of what the stock price could do. Now, when I am looking for my trades, one of the first things I want to do, and I'm going to pick a stock which I don't think I have any lines on. Okay, not that. I'm going to go for. There we go. Nice. So a cleaner chart, okay? I have not marked any levels on target. Now, when I look at these kind of stocks, you can just go and mark simple spot resistance. I could put resistance right here. I could put a level of support right here. In fact, just to not confuse you, let's remove that. So this is a level of support right here. Price fell down in August, bounced at that level, fell down again in September, October, bounced at that level. Fell down once again, target, fell down, bounced at that level in October. We were holding this level. Now, what that means is, now that we've fallen well below that level, when we start to move upwards again, price could get rejected at this level. Because this level works both ways, from the, from the top, but also from the bottom towards it. So when we fall down, we could bounce to that level. When we go up, we could get rejected at the level. It's a line of support which now may become resistance because we are now below it. So we were above the line, it was a level of support, you know, it was supporting the price action. Now we're below the line, it could become resistance and the stock could fail to break above that 147 level. But on the other hand, so that's the option side of things. On the other hand, we want to zoom out and we want to see how far price could get to because sometimes you'll see crazy, crazy price predictions. Someone might say, okay, I'm buying shares of target 126 and I want to sell it when it gets to 180. And you might be like, 180? That's so far away. Why would you choose 180? Well, look here, just last year. Well, it wasn't even last year, it was this, this year, just the beginning of this year, January, February, it was at 180. So if someone was to buy shares at this level, they could look to get, you know, about 55 to 60% return once target, target gets back to the highs from this year. Someone else might be holding for next three years, five years, in a, in an attempt to take target all the way back to 250, 260. So when people have price predictions, oftentimes they're looking at what's happened in the past. It could be two years ago, it could be three years ago, it could be further back. But again, the reason I'm saying that is because there are going to be stocks, stocks that I call out or I say I'm buying and it could be super cheap right now. So if I exhibit A and you're like, $15, oh, I missed the run-up, it's gone. All I need to do is this, zoom all the way out, zoom all the way out, look at the years before, look at the years before. And then what do you start to see? Oh, 2022? So if I was $24, oh wait, 2020, beginning of 2022, February, January. So if I was $28 and you're like, oh wait, this is why he's telling me to buy shares at, you know, $10, $7, because we could get back up to those levels, $20. Now we might not get all the way back to $24, we might not. But if you can take it from $15 to $20, that is a 25% return on your investment, right? Which is why I say I like to obviously trade the options to get the income, but also the, the long-term shares. Because you could use that as your, let's say, your savings account, right? Let's say the options that you flip every few weeks, every month is your current, um, current source of income, you know? Cash flow, let's call it. Well, long-term, you also want to make gains. So again, so far, yes, it's, you know, it's running, it's bullish, it's above the moving average, it's great. It's still not, it's still not gone as high as it could go. It's still got plenty of room to run. So again, that's why shares are also an option when it comes to trading and investing. Any questions? No worries. Um, I can't see the chat. So if anyone types and, you know, isn't able to unmute for any reason, I cannot actually see that. So I will not be able to answer those unless they're off mute.
I have a question. Um, can you show us how you use Fibonacci retracements to show like third levels of support?
Yeah, I don't actually use Fibonacci replace retracements, but I can show you how people do that with market structure.
Okay.
Does that help? I don't use Fibonacci trade. I don't use the Fibonacci.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how it should work.
Okay. Well, think about this. I'm going to use Amazon right now for an example, because that's what the guy has traded and it makes perfect sense. Okay? So this is again, this is not for those who are listening or watching the recording. This is, what I'm showing is not Fibonacci retracement. But it's a, it's a similar concept in, in the way of analyzing price action. So here's Amazon from the past three months, right? August, September, October. August, we ran and I'm going to remove this. I'm going to hide this for now. Right, August, we pushed up, we retraced, we felt, we sold off. We held, we pushed up again. At this time, when we got to the lows, we sold off, we got to lows, we got to higher lows. Last time the lows were at 170 bucks, now the lows are 180 bucks. We pushed up again. Even sold off here a bit, but in the meantime, we pushed up again, sold off again, again, higher lows. Now the lows are at 196. Previous highs are now the new lows. And again, we're looking to push up. So again, I don't use Fibonacci tool, don't use Fibonacci retracement, but think of it this way. When your stock runs up a little bit, sometimes it's going to come back to a level before it moves up for the next leg up. When it does fall down again, it may come back to a previous level where we reached the specific high, right? Again, we put, we push up, we come back to a level where we were again at a previous high. Now, now it's the new low. So again, this is higher highs. This is a high, but this is a higher high. This is a higher high than that one. This is a low, this is also a low, but this is a higher low. This is also a higher low than before. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. So with the Fibonacci tools, a similar trace, uh, sorry, a similar concept. Like I said, I don't actually use that.
That yellow line is your support line?
Yes, which was previously a form of resistance, but yeah, consolidation, but yeah.
Where would our resistance line be?
Um, let me draw that for you. So right now it will be at the high, right here.
Perfect.
So that, you see the line I've got, this like, let's say a Margaret Schutcher line? I'll be looking to push the 216 up to my price target. If I was in Amazon swings, that would be my price target. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, what would the price target be?
216, 216, 13.
What was this method called again?
This is market structure.
Okay. Well, it said like, didn't she say like, damn?
Fibonacci. Oh, you, okay. So, so I thought the same person who asked the question before was the same person from now. The person who had asked me, yeah, asked me about the.
There's a method that she said.
Yeah, Fibonacci retracement, this.
Fibonacci, okay.
I actually thought it was the same person, so I, but yeah, this is the Fibonacci tool. So what you would look for is retracements to around 0.5 before you move higher. But like I said, I don't actually use that tool.
How do you set your support and resistance, um, lines?
How do I set them?
Yeah, like what do you base, base it off of?
Okay. Great question. Thank you for that. I base it off of where price failed to break above or a level where price consolidated at before reversing. So give me any stock.
Uh, you could do CLSK, I guess.
Okay. So let's go back to, let's ignore right now. Let's go back to beginning of the year, okay? So we're December, Wednesday, 27th December. See here, three, four days in a row, we reached this price level around $13 and we failed to break above. We sold off at that level, right? A few days in a row. We came back up to that level, we gapped up above that level. Cool. Next level. This line here, $17.89. Here, price failed to break above. Okay, cool. We finally broke. We came back, finally broke. Cool, great. Now, when you get to this, this part of this, the chart in May, we wicked off, wicked off, wicked off, didn't break above. We now actually, we consolidated at this, around this level between $14 and $20 for a while. But either way, you can see there are points here where the bodies of the wick, sorry, the bodies of the candle are just below the line of resistance, right? We got, we get to November now. What happens at $17? Rejected, one, two, three days in a row. 11th, 12th, 13th of November and sold back off. Does that make sense? Just where price failed to break above constantly.
Yeah. Now, so usually, um, you usually use, or you check from the beginning of the year, correct?
No, not even. It can be two years, it can be, it can be a year, it can be two years, it can be longer, just where price failed to break above or like a strong level of resistance or support. It can be, okay, obviously not from there, but you know, if I pick a different stock, let's say PayPal. It can be levels from whenever, like whenever the stock was lasted that price. It could be a year, two years. It just depends what stock you're trading. We're trying to find something which is a good example. Um, okay, yeah. So this $48 level, I remember this. I think it's from 2021, 2022. We're going to go find it. So obviously 2024, but also if we go back, back. Let's keep going back. See how far we have to go till we find that level again. There we go. And what is it? This is back in. This is 2022. Yeah, I had mentioned it, 2022. You see, $48, 2022, we failed to break above, like four or five days in a row. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Alright.
The patterns usually repeat themselves, right?
Exactly. Great point. When it comes to stocks, patterns tend to repeat themselves. So if in 2022, we fell, we sold off from $66 all the way to $27. Well, the next time we, we get to $66, which was, I think it might even be now. Nah, it could be now. Let's see. Well, it's now. We could easily fall all the way back to $48. It is possible. But the reason that it might not happen, I just pop these on the, alright, okay. Moving averages are all bullish. It should be okay, but it could still potentially drop, sell off all the way back down to $48. That's why the line is there. It's a hype, it's, I wouldn't say it's a high possibility, but it is highly possible. Great point. Any other questions on that before I move on to the next topic? Okay. Next to be, I want to point out.
So, oh yeah, go ahead. I have a quick question. Um, now looking at the charts and, and the supports and the resistances, is that how you choose the price target?
Exactly. Exactly how I choose a price target. So if I was to buy a firm shares today, AFRM, my first price target or next price target for shares especially would probably be at $79. If it was options trades, then I'd probably switch it up because something more, you know, something more close to where we are now, so $70 probably. But yeah, if I was buying shares, I'd be looking to hold them until around $80.
And then you would, you would sell them off?
Mm-hmm. Or maybe not all of them, but a good portion before you probably sell back down.
Okay. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you. Alright. Next point I want to talk about. Here we are. I don't want to do Palantir yet because I know that one is, you know, this is, uh, this one that's been grabbing people by the neck. But look, so Walmart here. Reason I have Walmart here is because it went back in October, last year, sorry, last month, you guys were here, or many of you guys were here. We were trading Walmart calls. Why? It's part of a pattern. Look at this. Look at the breakout, right? I wished, I might, I might have a screenshot of Discord from before this breakout. You wait. You see the pennant that was formed, right? Right here. In fact, let me just make it a little bit more clear to you. Uh, we, this is one we discussed in the Discord last month and it was very clear. Here we are, the pennant. So two trend lines here. Trend line from the lows getting higher and trend line from the highs getting lower, right? Like a triangle, it's a pennant, right? Wow. I mean, we traded it last month, but we stopped trading it. I mean, it could have probably been one for the, one where you buy a contract a month or two out and you just go crazy with it. Maybe we should have done that. Who knows? You wait, we made our money on Walmart, it's fine. Um, but look, this is a pennant. This is why it's important to recognize patterns as well. This is a pennant formed. And obviously, that means price, once, you know, we get close to those trend lines, price is likely to break out, which is exactly what happened here. Now, how would you trade this? How would you treat this if you're trying to make money off this or you're trying to get into this play? My strategy. It's just my style of trading. I have these three lines. The green line is a nine-day moving average. The orange line is in 21-day moving average. The twen, the red line is a 50-day moving average. Sometimes I use the 200. I just go back and forth, I mix it up. But either way, the most important here, the nine and 21, which I like for swing trading, especially that short-term swing trading. So stop, the price action finally breaks out. Even here, still some consolidation. We didn't really break up, break up. I think this is where we sold somewhere here. That was when I was in Nigeria, I remember that. We break out. Someone's going to be up here like, yeah, Walmart is up 4% on the day. I'm going to buy a calls. And it pulls back. Come on, needs to catch some steam. Push up again. Huge wicks. And then we consolidate and we break out. So the reason I'm pointing this out is because you'll see this with a couple of stocks. Like I said, Palantir does something similar, right? But with Walmart, the best way to trade these kind of stocks is wait for them to pull back. Like shown off, what I say, we buy on the pullback. I prefer to buy on red days, but at least buy on the pullback. When it sells off, when it's close to moving average, it's still holding above the moving average and prices respecting the moving average. And you can see this intraday. If we pick up any 15-minute chart, you will see this, right? Here, this is a great example. Yesterday for puts. Crazy week, by the way. So.
How did you restart the chart? You, sorry?
Uh, right click.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Quest, I'll see you. So.
Yes, sir.
So in fact, let's do it in the five minutes, like yesterday, right? This is, this is, these are nice charts, right? If you're day trading, right? This is your day trading. So we know on the daily timeframe, the four-hour timeframe, Walmart is bullish, right? I can show you again. Daily timeframe. Yeah, bullish above the moving averages, great. It's just going up, four hour, nice, we see that, fine. Intraday, if you want to take a day trade, right? This is the difference between day trading and swing trading. Day trading, Walmart decides it's going to push up to the moving average and sell off. Crazy wicks, by the way. Sellers trying to take control. Outside bar as well here. But yeah, we see consolidation. Alright, we're waiting now. We know for our daily Walmart's bullish, fine. We see consolidation. Are we going to break out? No, we're working pretty hard though. Alright, we start selling off. There's one red candle, okay? There's two red five-minute candles, okay? There's three, okay. Let's also look at the 15-minute now. One 15-minute candle is three five-minute candles, right? Where are we at? Here we go. Okay, we're seeing it's pretty bearish. Huge red candle. Let's go back to the five minute now. This is where you, this is where you have to start, you know, being surgical with your approach. We see in a few red candles. I want to get inputs, I'm scared. Wait for price to come back near the moving average and it starts selling off again, then I enter my puts, right? You don't want to enter the puts down here at $90.03. You want to enter when it's at $90.31, $90.20 and it starts to fall back again. And then again, some consolidation. That's the time, that consolidation time is where you say, you know what? I'm going to close the charts, you know what? I'm going to go get some lunch, you know, I'm going to go on Xbox. Because you know, when a consolidation happens, you know, we're already up in the play, right? It's dropped 40, 50, 60, 70 cents. This is where a lot of people get confused when it comes to day trading especially. It's consolidating. Price moves up a little bit, sells off even more. We've gone from $90.03 to $89.10. This is the kind of time you should be taking profit when it tested moving average. Now, this is where people get socked out or people lose out. We've just dropped a dollar and 30 cents. We probably made a good amount of money, 40, 50, 60% on your puts. Price starts to uptrend again, which is fine, because it could get rejected by the moving average and sell off again. It could. But once it starts to break above, remember, we got in at $90.34. Now it's gone from $89.10 back to $89.30, $89.40. This, when it's consolidating here, this is your chance to get out because you're like, you know what? We've, we've made a little money. We don't want to let the green trade turn red. We're A on the puts and overall Walmart is bullish. Remember, this is the five-minute chart. On the four hour, the daily, etc., it is, I'm sure the weekly is green. We're now seeing some consolidation lifetime. 20, 30 minutes, this is like six, six candles straight consolidating. Those are the times you just need to say, you know what? I'm making money, I'm going to, I'm going to get out of the trade. Sure, later on in the day it sold off again, but then by that time, again, it's a mindset thing. By that time you're thinking, you know what? It could keep dropping tomorrow, it could keep dropping tomorrow. What happens tomorrow, Tuesday? Boom. Oh, now you're, mm, mm, mm. Look at that. Now we're going the other way. That's the difference between day trading and swing trading. If I was swing trading, I would not be looking at Walmart puts, right? I would not be looking at Walmart puts. But if you're day trading and you see prices respecting moving average, you can take a chance. You can. Any questions on that?
Can you explain some of the candles that like would start a moving average like that? Like the Doji or like, I was, I was looking at a few on YouTube today.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
That was it. That's all I was asking.
Yeah, so the Doji is one. Um, you know, you've got a dragonfly, you've got a gravestone. Um, let's see. Oh, you go, okay. Hammer candle here, could be reversal. Inverted hammer though. Hammer candle followed by inverted hammer, hammer's kind of funny. Here, here's a gravestone Doji. Also a double bottom on the 50-minute. This is a gravestone Doji, right? Okay, let's zoom in, right here. This right here, gravestone Doji. Body should be a little bit thinner, but this is a gravestone Doji right here. This is a hanging man, to be honest. And then this is the inverted hammer. Um, but what were you trying to see or say in regards to that? You just want me to name the candlesticks or?
Well, I was just saying like, say you're going through the chart and you see like a certain candle. You're like, okay, this has the chance to like uptrend or go or downtrend like.
Yeah, okay, okay, no, great question, great question.
And you're like, oh, okay.
Yeah. So for example, the grave, gravestone Doji. This could signal potential reversal in price. In this case, it will be to the upside. So price is bottom now. Gravestone could be potentially time for us to start trending again, which it was, right? Um, the reason being, the body's at the bottom because this is at the lows. So gravestone Doji usually happens at the lows, like open and closing of prices at the lows. Dragonfly is the opposite, right? The open and close will be at the highs. This is pretty much, hmm. That's, well, that's, there's no dragonfly Dojis anywhere really here. Either way, yeah. So gravestone Doji, right? Could be a potential reversal here. Prices sold off, could be time for us to start uptrending again, which it was. If I can find a dragonfly, that would be good. No, but here's a Doji either way. Didn't really mean much in this case, but this is the Doji right here. But yeah, that, that's pretty much it. I mean, in this case, I'd say this is a dragonfly Doji, but the funny thing is here, the following candle was red, but then we continued to uptrend. So it wasn't really, it wasn't really useful here. But I think that in these cases, like when you're looking at these kind of stocks, I don't pay, I mean, I take in consideration the different candlestick patterns, but I don't, I don't let it sway me too much. Unless it's like an outside day on a daily or inside day on a daily, that kind of thing, hammer candle on daily. But let's say intraday, I don't pay too much attention to it unless I really need to and I'm trying to get more insight into what I'm doing. But let's say, intraday, I don't pay too much attention to it, unless I really need to and I'm trying to get more insight into what I'm doing, if that makes sense. Good question, Duff, thanks for that. Because people might also not have heard of dragonflies, gravestones, Dojis, ha- hang- hanging man, inverted hammer. Who knows? Okay, any other questions?
I was gonna say, what MAs you got up?
Uh, exponential moving averages, so, um, the green is a nine day, orange is twenty one day, red is fifty day. So, for those who don't know what it means by exponential moving average. It is the average price of the stock price action over a specific day period. So, if it's nine, nine days, orange, twenty one, twenty one days. Red fifty, fifty days. Good question. The young lady that was about to ask me something?
Uh, yeah, could you, um, tell us more about the bull flag pattern and kinda like how you identified it or the pendant pattern? If that's something you use to trade a lot?
Yeah, definitely. You know what? That Walmart. That might even. Hmm. This right here, well, it doesn't look like it anymore because it's broken up. This right here looked a little bit like a bull flag. Again, when it, when it does occur. Like, do you, do you wanna look, see what it looks like or do you wanna kinda understand what it does?
Um, I kinda wanna understand what it does. Like, I'm looking at on the one hour chart right now, and I feel like it does look like a flag. And I've heard of this pattern, but yeah, I'm trying to kinda figure out what it does and then like how do I justify. Saying like this is a bull flag and it's probably gonna break.
You said the one hour chart?
Yeah, I'm looking at another one hour. I think it's, I'm trying to fi- figure out the where, um, you see it on Walmart.
Just for me, yeah, for me, this don't really look like a bull flag on Walmart.
I mean, the one that you were just looking at.
Oh, ah, oh, okay, okay, okay.
I was trying to be like, where, what day is it?
Yeah, that's the one day chart.
So this is like October seventh, okay?
Yeah, this is like September to May, October.
Okay, yeah, I think, okay, I think I got.
Yeah, you see the kind of pattern? Uh, and we can put some stuff in the chat after, um, so you can, you can see what it looks like. But basically, what's more important, at least that you know what it does, um.
Yeah.
Pretty much, I think you know, it just means, um, stock, the stock price action is likely to go higher. Um, just means like, not, I wouldn't say a rally is coming, but you could look at a continuation of some nice bullish momentum. Um, for those who don't underst- or don't know, the reason it's called a bull flag is pretty much because it looks like a flag. Um, yeah, like a flag on a pole, like a triangular flag, of course, on a pole, basically. Um, so, yeah. And, uh, yeah, it's the same as a pennant, if, if, because you mentioned pennant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same as a bullish pennant, like, it's just triangle pattern before it breaks out, yeah.
And do you use this a lot in your strategy?
Yeah, definitely. If I see it there, then yeah, like with Walmart last month, I did, I did it. I just didn't realize it can keep, can keep going, going, going in a few weeks.
Yeah.
Great question, though. Thank you so much for that.
Which setup is, has been the most consistently profitable for you?
Great question. I'm a finder for you, I'm finding, I'm finding. Hmm, I won't go with that. I will go with. Wait, hold on, let's go to Google. Now, what was the stock today? Trying to think. There was, this is it, this is it, this is it right here. Here we go. So. Great question, by the way. So this is my favorite kind of setup, right? Reason this is my favorite kind of setup. CrowdStrike, great stock, I know about the company. Went from three eighty nine. To two hundred, right? That's a crazy drop, right? Fifty percent drop. Okay, what happened now? We start recovering. This is August, we start recovering. We sell off. Because we didn't, we didn't really break the moving average as well. Now I broke all three moving averages. This is why the setup I like, the recovery trade, right? Now each time, we hit my resistance, sold off. Now each time we push up, we sell off, but then we push up again. So, it sounds so basic, it doesn't sound entertaining, but a stock that's oversold, way oversold, crashes thirty, forty percent. Netflix is another one, like, there's so many of them. Netflix now, yeah, eight seventy two, cool. You were not eight seventy two in summer twenty twenty two, I remember that. I remember that really well. Hold on, let me catch you out. Oh, I remember this.
It got bottomed out like one eighty five.
Thank you, you remember. I remember it very well. There you go. Look at that. Sold off. Tried to break the moving averages. Sold off, consolidated, tried to break. Okay, now it broke, we got some momentum. Consolidation for three, four, five, six months. Now we start recovering. Okay, sold off again, recovering. But it comes a time, this is it, this is it, this is it, just wait. Comes a time, this year. Sorry, last year, October. We start trending. We go from three fifty. To four hundred, sell off, push, sell off, push, sell off, push. Earnings gap up, so we got, you know, a little bit of a boost there. Doji earnings, boom. Now every time we sold off, we pushed up higher. This is a bit weird, but yeah. This is, this is my favorite, favorite kind of setup. Way oversold stocks that are just going to recover. CrowdStrike not going anywhere. Cybersecurity space, they're not going anywhere. Netflix not going anywhere. In the technol- technological space, with the streaming services, they're not going anywhere. Those are my kind, favorite kind setups, those way oversold stocks, which are gonna recover. And you know who's gonna recover soon? The one that, you know, from the earnings play last week, just wait. Target. Alright, target, remember target, just back in March, hundred eighty dollars. Don't worry, when it, when it's time to run, it's gonna run, it's gonna run. Another one I liked last year, I call this one fifty six, fifty three dollars, I think. We can look back in the chat. PayPal, sold off from two fifty dollars, all the way down to fifty two, two fifty to fifty two, alright? Wait for it to start coming up again. Wait for it to start breaking above the levels of resistance. Wait for it to consolidate before making a move higher. And look, we've gone from fifty two dollars last November. To eighty, eighty six, ninety four now, this November. Those are my favorite kind of setups. And the thing is, you don't have to wait a year for your returns. Each and every through, you know, a few weeks, each and every month, it's gonna give you some returns. That's it. Great question, though. Great question. Thank you for that.
Friends, can you look at Home Depot, tickets ticker HD?
Yes, it is.
And how you would draw, yep, um, how you would draw like support and resistance for like a swing?
Yeah, so you see I've kinda got some trend lines marked out on HD already from before, alright? Now.
Yep.
So if I'm looking at support and resistance for now for HD, Home Depot. Okay, so I was, first thing I do, I'm on daily chart, I scroll all the way back. Let me see where Home Depot came from. Okay, we had something here, alright, four nineteen. I'll still mark it, I'll still mark this level. Just here. I'm gonna scroll back a little bit more. If there's nothing. Nothing, okay, cool. So we're, we're near the highs. Okay, the highs must be around here. So how would I mark out Home Depot? Here. Oops. Do you know why I put that level there?
No.
Because the price failed to break above there a couple of days in a row. You see the bodies there? Just, they're trying to get above.
But it wouldn't, okay.
That's it. And then you see, you see, did I just mark that four sixteen level now or was that from before?
You just did it now.
Okay, well, that's the interesting thing. So, see, so I marked it because of what happened like what, three, uh, you know, however, however long ago that was, right? But then you come back to today's price act, or this month's price action, and you see this is a level it failed to break above. What did we say earlier? Old support, sorry, patterns repeat themselves, patterns tend to repeat themselves. So, this is a resistance level back in whatever year that was when I found it, and it's a resistance level again today. So, that's a good, good stock you called, but HD is kinda at the highs. Let it, let it pull back a little bit and then aim higher. But, yeah, it's at a place where I would say it's gonna struggle to break above a little bit. Just like Palantir has at, what, Palantir has it at, I think, sixty seven? Yeah, sixty seven, right? Same, same thing with HD. Great question, though. Thank you for that.
What about, um, L U M N?
L U M N? So this is Lumen, right? Oh, I've got, man, you see how many of these charts I just got marked up? I didn't even know. So, that's funny. I did not even know that. Alright, well, let me ask you, what do you think my price target for Lumen would be?
Um. Thirteen dol- is that what it says? Thirteen dollars?
But wait, hold on. So this is how I'll do it, right? We're right now, we're at seven dollars.
Okay.
What would my first, do you wanna, so think about it this way?
Oh, your first price target would be like ten, ten dollars?
Exactly, great. Think of it this way.
Okay.
You just made it to the first round of playoffs. Are we thinking about the final? Or are we thinking about the second round of playoffs?
Second round?
Right, so let's, let's, let's wait till we, you know, the price target will be the second round. We wanna get to that second round. We break the second round. Go to the third round, to the quarterfinals, semifinals, and then we might get to the final up there. But Leo Lumen at seven dollars, we shouldn't think about the thirteen yet, right? Let's think about the ten.
Yeah, nah.
You get it? Yeah.
And you take profits at ten.
Exactly, because what's probably gonna happen when we get to ten?
Gonna drop that gun, but then that's when you call your, that's when you put your calls in, because you know it hit your top resistance button.
Exactly.
Okay, so that's how you can be like, alright, I wanna start going in on call. But then there's points where it might just break that too, so you gotta watch out.
See, you're an expert.
Uh, yeah.
So, yeah, um, you, you got this little news. So they completed cash tender offers. So they're gonna do a buyback potentially. Which. Hmm, yeah, that is bearish.
They got, um, Lumen at a, a nine dollar call for, um, twelve six. What do you think about that?
Nine dollar call for twelve six. I think it's a li- how is it doing so far? I think it's a little bit, it's a little bit hard. I think January. Twelve six is next week, right?
Yeah, that's a little much, right?
That's lots. That would require us to get back up to, um, with this one. That would require us to get back up to like, here. Right?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a lot for it. You know?
True.
That's like, that, but actually, that's like fifteen, twenty percent.
Yeah.
It's a lot. Um, what, is there a reason you went with that?
Um, I think Pierre might have said something about it, but I think, like, now that I'm in the chat more, I'm understanding like. How much that actually is versus just looking at it as a smaller number, like, okay, seven dollars getting to nine, you know? Like, I feel like I'm just now starting to figure out this, the charts and stuff, so. But I only brought one contract of that for super cheap.
Yeah, 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 there's nothing wrong with that, you know? I just wanted to understand, because if I look at this and I'm like, hmm, you know, we at seven dollars and we need to go to nine, that's a two dollar jump, that's a. That's like twenty percent, I think. Twenty percent.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's a lot, right? It requires some big news or big moves, you know?
Ah, for sure.
Any other questions? I've got about five minutes left, then I need to obviously, you know, order some food, but.
Can you check out Meta?
Of course, great stock, great. This is actually a great, um, recovery stock as well. So Meta, this is a beautiful recovery, right? Thank you for pointing that one out. Five fifty we dropped to. We held a line of support. We start up trending again. Meta is looking good. We're breaking above the moving averages, we're holding above the moving averages, the nine, the twenty one, and the fifty. We're breaking above my, we've broken above my line of resistance at five sixty nine. We're working toward, we whipped off my five seventy six level. We're working towards moving back up to that again and going higher, back up to the six hundred levels from last month. That's a great, great swing trade potential right here. This is ideal swing trade potential right here. So let me ask you a question, since you brought that stock to the table. If I was to buy a December call for Meta, what would you recommend I buy for a strike price?
I would like five. Five five eighty, five eighty five, if it ain't too high.
Exactly, exactly that. You can get five eighty five for, you know, December thirteen, maybe, well, I don't know how, no, actually, no, that's probably expensive. But yeah, a five eighty, five eighty five, that's the kind of level we'll be looking at, you know?
If zoom in on that, um, like hourly or thirty. It's got like a little bit of.
Oh, and this is the thing, look, we got our bull flag. Look at that.
So I got, uh, I got a five eighty five call as a lotto for Friday.
For this Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, that will, yeah, that'd be a little bit more difficult, but it is, I mean, as long as it goes in your direction, you'll be okay. That's the beauty of options. It doesn't actually have to go to five eighty five. Just needs to go in your direction. So if it's five seventy six by Friday, five eighty, it's actually okay for you. But on the hourly chart. This is this right here, it's our little bull flag that the lady earlier was looking for on the hourly chart. Break out, we can break out, we can go. Hmm, we can go. Up here, yep, somewhere here. I tried to draw a spade, but yeah, we can go up here. Good, good, that's a great one. Our four hour. Four hour look nice, comfortable. Good call though. Are you up or down on that? Okay. I'm gonna look at Microsoft because I had picked this one out today and I obviously didn't take it, but it was still amazing. Yeah, Microsoft got room to run to four thirty seven. That's what I did, wanna show you guys. Consolidated, broke above moving average, Doji. Pushed. We also wanna look at the weekly. Weekly looks like it's fine, it's had to break back up. Four hour looking nice, four hours looking smooth. And then hourly, even better, right? You guys see it? Any other questions?
What are you looking at for tomorrow?
Um, kind of the stocks I talked about, PayPal, CLSK, Microsoft, um. PayPal, CSK, Microsoft, oh, G E O. Yeah, a few things. Don't worry about hourly. We can hold on the four hour. Oh, don't worry, yeah. PayPal, Microsoft, G E Os, Clean Sparks, CLSK, you know? Hmm, we just need the crypto rally again, just Bitcoin to get back up. Waiting on Bitcoin. It's coming, it's, it's taking its time, it's working. Get back to ninety five K for us, please. Yeah.
If you can, go to their C L, C L S A. If you can go to their C L, C L, it's a, I mean, S K chart, I got out. But um I looked at it on the weekly, and the weekly is looking kind of good to me. So I'm just trying to see if you, anything I see.
I see everything you see. The weekly is holding. Yeah, weekly has actually been up trending the past few weeks. Um, the daily. Also holding, I mean, yesterday, if this was a regular stock, it would have continued, it probably would have pulled back a little bit, not this bad, and continued, but yeah. Weekly look nice, holding on the moving averages, holding on level of support. They look fine. And then always when you get to the, you know, the four hour, one hour, it looks a bit worse, but hey, we have a good friend backing us. This friend right here is holding. As long as this friend holds, CLSK holds. Good question, though.
Uh, one more. Can you check out uh L R C X? I've been adding it for a minute.
L R C X? This sounds interesting. And it is indeed interesting. We gotta break a bit higher for me to like this more. If it does break, we can go back up to eighty six. If we get rejected.
I've been watching it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Watching it as a, like off their floor.
Mm hmm. This is what my.
Is that?
This is what my level will be.
Yeah. So a call here wouldn't be good?
It would be risky. We're below the nine and twenty one moving averages. It will be risky. It'll be. It's one where you, where you say, I can see why you took it. But why not just wait a little bit more? The, even if you wait a couple of dollars, it's still got plenty of.
No, I have, I haven't got in yet. I just been adding.
Okay, okay. I like that, though. I like, you know what? Think this has gained, it's gained a spot. It's gained a spot. You on the watch? Oh, alright, I gotta move something around. Well, you know what? So I'll do.
I was just about to ask too, if you had like the basic version of trade in view or like the premium or the plus.
I got the most basic version that exists.
You, you don't use no type of flow, huh, Prince?
No, I don't use any flow.
You don't like it or you just don't use it?
I don't like it. It, it never does what it needs to do. I mean, see, flow will tell you today, somebody just bought. Five hundred thousand dollars worth of, you know, Nvidia one forty strike price for next week. Nvidia will still drop. Two, three, four dollars tomorrow. I don't know.
Is check out Costco.
Yeah, yeah, Costco's on my watch list. My Yahoo Finance watch list. It was up again today, ten dollars. Yeah, Costco, beautiful. This is a gem. This is nice. It's a great stock. Um, I think last year, December, this was when I said, around, I think it's eight hundred. Might have even been less. But yeah, long term, yeah, December, oh, even five hundred. It's a, it's a great one. It's just, this is the buy and hold, really. Costco is not going anywhere. Everyone's still gonna be walking around with their Costco cards in five years. Costco, Costco. Until they, if I buy before they do the stock split, when it goes to a thousand, eleven hundred, et cetera. It's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be stock split time. So, you know. Any other questions? Great, great question, by the way. You know, the boy needs to eat dinner, so, or he need to order the dinner so they can deliver it, so you know. Um, if there's any other question, let me know over the next minute. I'll happily answer.
Can you check it? Can you check L L Y?
Eli Lilly, this is calls, 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 going up, up, up. This is going, me and June did this in our one on one. Last week, this is going up. We, we, this is going up. Expect to see us at eight hundred thirty. Hmm, this week is Thanksgiving week, so maybe by next week. This is going up. This is calls, calls, calls.
Prince.
Hello, Rams.
Can you, yeah, can you talk about IV, IV crush and how that affects um, um, our, our cost output?
Yes, thank you for that. So everybody who trades earnings here, or whoever's tried to trade earnings here. IV crush is a common term you will hear. IV crush stands for implied volatility crush, by the way. So. When we enter an option trade, we want the IV, the implied volatility to increase. Now, what happens a lot of times around earnings is some stocks will drop dram- dramatically, drop drastically, right? And then what happens is, target for example last week, drops. The implied volatility decreases. And it decreases so much that you can't even get out your play, and it decreases so much that by the time expires around. You're, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be able to get out your play because the IV is just dead, almost dead. It's just, you know, it's dropped dramatically. And no matter what happens, there's not enough volatility in the market for you to get out of your option contracts. So. If you are trading earnings, especially those ones where it's like you traded on Wednesday or Thursday. Beware of IV crush because, and it's also, sorry, not just earnings, it's also big news releases like, um. I know press conference, I don't know, the CEO coming out and saying something random, it could be whatever. But. When the implied volatility drops heavily on your contract. Your contract is gonna be worth a lot less than it should be. So it's extremely important that you pay attention. To any news, any potential earnings, um, anything like that around. The time of your expiry because it could affect your contract. So IV crush is pretty much just. A, a huge drop in the implied volatility on your contract. On each and every one of your option contracts at a bottom. If you scroll down, it should say, uh, either says implied volatility or says IV, one of the two, and there'll be a percentage there. When you look at that, it's probably around, probably seventy, eighty percent most of the time, if you're, you know, buying with the same week. But if it drops forty percent, thirty percent, it's gonna be hard for you to get your contracts and your, your premium is gonna drop as well. So it's all about managing risk. You know, those spikes of volatility are nice when we're in the trading and it goes our way. But the spikes in the opposite direction are no good. So you know, if a stock is about, sorry, if a company's announcing earnings, if they're doing a merger, if there's any news announcements. Um, if a product is looking for FDA approval, um, economic data. Um, those are the, maybe, you know, even an election, a political event, those are the kind of things that will, you know, can cause IV crush. Great question.
A lot of stocks went up after the, the, this election.
Yeah, so when it, when IV, sorry, when implied volatility increases in our favor, that works nice. When it decreases, no good, we won't be able to get out. Our contract's just gonna be there, sad looking at us. We'll be able to sell it. Great question, Rambo. Make sure you guys tune in on Sundays. We're doing a workout with Rambo.
Absolutely, yo, I'm very much welcome.
Straight up. So yeah, just watch out.
I cannot walk, bro. I still can't walk, bro.
You, eh, man, I went into the gym today and yesterday. You can go to the gym, Quest, get back in the gym.
I've been going, I went, you remember, I, I did the Zoom call.
Yeah, I'm saying after that, you slacking.
But nah, bro.
No excuses. Get back in the gym. Let's get to work.
If I had to run from, alright, bro. Go eat, bro.
I'm gonna. Don't worry.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys, so much.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And this will be recorded. You're welcome. It will be uploaded to YouTube tonight. Goodbye and good night.